Unless they're because they see.
Lee Nolan.
This area right here.
Yeah.
Have more.
Yeah, she sent an email. I tried to call her and.
Have help?
She wants to hit mute. I'm up on.
What the heck?
We're at the play out about that corner down there.
The issue was sitting home.
Why they did what they did. That weren't good. I want to make sure counsel knows.
City.
Yeah, not a problem. Meeting yesterday is where we got started.
Oh, by the way.
We're getting fired.
She has no one downstairs. She has no one downstairs.
Well, there's two now.
How come it's not fixed?
Which are good.
How long does he have to stay?
Do you know all the public comment in case anyone comes in?
It's crazy.
Because technically someone could come in at the end of the meeting and want to.
He's a fifty-year architect.
I ain't taking that.
He's talking beatles.
So Mark Miller won't be with you.
It was brown on the corner of Fifth and Maple.
So we're gonna put tea in his place?
With brown. My friends live in the gray one right there.
They bring translator?
And they when they.
I'm just gonna mention tea. I'm not mentioning.
They just pushed a lot of them.
Well, I'm trying to tell those two.
Old sister in there looking.
Oh, waiting for you.
Oh. Linda hasn't much very far.
Did you tell him that somebody else was gonna be here tonight?
Mark?
No. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. I just heard him say, well, Mark Miller's not gonna be here, but I didn't hear him say that.
Yeah, he knows. Yeah.
Okay.
Friend of mine is putting out a.
Oh, yeah. There's always a guy.
Anyway, he bought that lot next to my friend. You know, where the four garage.
Everybody ready?
Okay.
Close.
That if you want, there's an attorney.
Oh, okay.
Please be quiet. Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting for June 5th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samansky?
Here.
Commissioner Berto? Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
Here. Thank you. Um, election of officers. I will turn it over to Katie.
Yes, so we will open the floor for nominations. We'll start with nominations for chair. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Mark.
Would you please state your name for the record for your nomination?
Commissioner Slawinski.
Thank you. And, um, Chair, do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we have Mark Whitliff has been nominated for the position of Chair. Are there any further nominations? And I'll go through this three times. Any further nominations? Last time, any further nominations? Hearing none, may I have a motion for the nomination of Mark Whitliff of as Chair of the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion for Mark Whitliff to be Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion?
I think Mark has done a great job.
I'll second that.
All right, Nancy, will you please take the role?
Commissioner Slawinski?
Commissioner Whitliff.
Pardon?
Whitliff.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Very much.
At this time, I'll turn it back over to the Chair for the remaining election of officers.
Uh, next appointment, um, is Vice Chair. I'd like to appoint, uh, Bob Slawinski as Vice Chair. Are there any others? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? No? Do I need a motion on this, Katie?
Yeah.
Um, yes, and for Bob to consent to the.
I accept.
Thank you.
I hope you would.
Yep, and now you can take your motion.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion, um, for Slawinski as Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion to have Bob Slawinski as Vice Chair.
Motion by Roger, second. Mick, any discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
High paying job?
Heaven. I want to double my salary.
Well, we don't go that far.
Okay.
We'll talk about.
Uh, position nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Marlene.
Marlene nominated by Bob. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? None? I'd like a motion, please.
Marlene, accept.
Marlene, accept. Sorry about that. Motion?
A motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
By Pam, discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Congratulations. And last is, uh, Recording Secretary.
I nominate Nancy Baker.
I second it.
I think the Secretary.
Secretary dominates. I have a question.
Yeah, I believe that's how it used to be.
Sorry.
She picks and chooses.
So I have to not.
Yeah.
I not I nominate Nancy Baker for Recording Secretary.
I don't have a choice. Wasn't given that voting right.
We could get a new person if you.
And do we have a motion on that? I'll make that motion. Motion by Mick, second.
I'll second it.
Roger, discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Congratulations, Nancy.
Yeah, congratulations.
You have me for another year.
Okay.
We'll get Katie to do it next year.
We'll see about that.
Here. I don't. We haven't nominated her yet, have we?
I know we haven't, no.
Yeah, see, I don't know. We have to make a motion for that.
Okay. Um, approval of agenda?
Chair, I do have a amendment to the agenda.
Okay.
Um, with Mark Miller not being in attendance tonight, I would like to amend that, um, item to have Tea with Little River Holdings do a brief presentation.
Okay.
Yeah.
When is that?
Yeah, okay. Um, approval at this, uh, approval of agenda at this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the January 5th, 2023 agenda with the amendment to add, uh, Tea from Little River Holdings.
I'll motion we accept the amended, uh, agenda.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second it.
Marlene, discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder? Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Conflicts of interest. Uh, is there any, any member of the Commission with any conflicts of what's on our agenda tonight? None? Okay. Approval of minutes. This time the Planning Commission can approve the December 1st, 2022 meeting minutes. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Motion by Mick, second.
Second.
By Bob, discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence? Is there any correspondence tonight? No? Okay, thank you. And, um, he from Little River Holdings? Podium, please.
Good evening. I'm T. Eftaxiades, uh, representing the Little River Holdings. I'm here tonight, um, to briefly discuss the issue of the stability of the retaining wall uh, south of the former American Dry Cleaners, uh, building. Some members of this commission, um, had question about, um, that, uh, wall and whether it was, um, safe. And, uh, so when, um, that was, uh, in, uh, mid-December. When, uh, we found out that there was a question through the local newspaper, we engaged a structural engineer who inspected, uh, the, uh, structure. Uh, I inspected it myself. I'm a geologist by trade. Uh, but, um, I wanted a structural engineer to look at it. Uh, I just received the preliminary report, um, a couple of days ago. And as soon as we have the final report, uh, I will be happy to provide it, uh, to, um, the planner, to you, if you need it. The, um, uh, the engineers, uh, finding is that, um, the current wall that served as the south wall of the, one of the two buildings on the property, that was the lander, the landry, the landrumet, um, has been there for a long time since its construction. So, um, oh, okay, if I can move here. So, this is a cross-section that's east-west of the current wall and which is, uh, eighteen-inch blocks with, um, concrete columns behind the wall that go all the way down to the, below the base of the wall. And, um, they are set on, uh, concrete bases. As it stands, this wall, uh, has not moved since the demolition of the building that used to be, the roof of the building was like here. However, uh, during, following the demolition or during the demolition, the, um, contractor installed a series of, uh, braces. And you can see in the cross-section, there is the wall, there is the surface of the, uh, property to the south. This is the base of, um, where the building was standing. And there are two sets of braces, a lower one and the upper one. And there are several of them. They're anchored into the concrete floor and they're anchored, uh, bolted on the wall. This is a, uh, temporary, uh, measure. It was a precaution, uh, in case there was a problem with the wall. However, it, um, at this point, the wall is stable even without those braces. The, um, even in a worst case, if the wall collapsed, then the failure behind the wall will extend to about thirteen, fourteen feet to the south. The property line is six feet from the wall. And then the building, the closest corner of the building to the south is southwest, is about thirty-five feet. So even if the wall collapsed, the worst-case failure would be, is shown by this line here, that would be the new surface. And that's assuming that the material are loose. We know that there is a lot of clay soils, which make it even more stable. Now, all of that being said, um, this is a temporary situation. And, uh, what temporary is in this case? As you know, and at a different, uh, time, in the next couple of months, I will be able to come and discuss with you what are the tentative plans for the entire gateway development. But assuming that construction in this area does not start for, say, two years, this wall with especially the lower set of braces is stable. However, we're going to be monitoring the, um, on a quarterly basis to see if there is any indication of movement by looking for any cracks uh, or any deflection in this, uh, wall. Eventually, this wall will be either replaced or augmented by a new wall that will be necessary for the development that will be in this part of the property. So this is the worst case. Still, it's within, the failure would be within a safe distance if it was to occur. I will be happy to answer any questions. Uh, oh, by the way, this is, um, you all seen this?
Yeah.
Photo of, uh, the south wall with the braces anchored in the, um, in the concrete and on the wall. And as you know, the property currently is fenced. And I know that, uh, there have been some questions about, um, the aesthetics, the fence of, uh, the fence and the area. We will address this at a different time. Uh, it's a temporary situation, uh, until the new plans for the development have been, um, solidified.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one.
Roger?
As the, the magic word you say is temporary.
Yes, sir.
And the problem we have is what does temporary mean? And in the case you say possibly two years, are we gonna look at this wall and the braces on this concrete floor and attach to the wall for two years?
Yes.
Yes, that's your answer. All right, thank you. To be honest.
Um, I mean, there, at this point, uh, without knowing for sure what building is going to be constructed on that portion of the property, how close to the wall. We cannot determine what else to do with the wall. So we have two issues. One is structural stability and the other is aesthetics. Uh, I'm here tonight to address the structural stability of the wall. That's what was brought up by the Planning Commission. Now.
It was.
Other, um, governmental bodies, the B R A and so on, have some questions about the aesthetics. We are meeting with, um, the parties involved, the city, the D D A, next week to discuss the aesthetics. And will be reporting.
Reason I brought up the retaining wall at the meeting about that.
Oh, you did? I did not. I've got an engineering background. Okay.
So I see a single standing wall.
Yeah.
Behind it. I have been on many projects before where they've had just a single wall like that and I've seen them fail. So I was worried about that, especially toward thirty-one, because that could still pull down. Then I wasn't sure how stable the braces were. You know, because before, historically, the old building was there, so all the walls of the building was the integral, integral part holding that wall in place. Once those other three walls disappeared, it put questions into my mind.
Sure.
But, uh.
And that's a valid concern. And as a matter of fact, when I was, when I became involved with this, uh, project a couple, uh, months ago, uh, that's one of the first thing I was looking at.
Yeah.
And, um, um, what, um, the engineer, um, brought up that I was not aware of is, um, the, uh, the, um, function of these pellsters. Which they go down all the way.
Yeah, I didn't know those things were behind it. All I was, under the assumption was just a solid brick.
Because, because I'm, like I said, other projects I've been on, take for example by Manistee National, when they put the tunnel in,
they didn't pay attention that there was a spring in there. They almost lost thirty-one.
Well, it related to that, uh, we're going to be, I said earlier, we're going to be monitoring the integrity of that wall because in the spring, when we start getting snow, water behind that wall, um, we want to make sure that we don't have any issues. One of the things that, um, we could do if we start seeing any indication of, um.
Cracks.
Uh, of, um, failure, uh, would be to remove some soil from the back of the wall to take off some pressure and to also allow water to, um, flow away.
Yeah.
On that wall.
Yeah, the biggest concern right now would be just what's the frost gonna do this winter to it?
Sure.
Yeah, once the, once everything's dried out next spring, it's not a big deal.
Because this is the first winter.
That's true. That's where most.
Since they, I think the demolition took place in, uh,
August, September.
August or so, July, August. So that will be the first winter. So.
And something could show up this year yet with the, depending on how much frost we get.
In the spring, that, that's why even though the engineer suggested that, uh, we monitor it twice, you know, every six months, we're going to do it on a more frequent basis, just to be.
Just be safe, yeah.
Safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just, that was my biggest concerns.
Sure.
Is, uh.
It's very valid.
I've been in the field way too many times and seen too many things fail. And I don't want to see.
Yeah.
Something like that happen.
Absolutely.
Well, that's true. Yeah, I'm surprised we weren't any, found any cracks in it. That's another concern of ours for.
No.
With that, uh, do we, we didn't determine how long, when it was built, how many years ago? Fifty, sixty?
Probably in the sixties.
Probably in the fifties.
Sixties.
Roger, I think, uh, the engineer has put some information on this. I don't recall of hand.
Well, it's, uh, just a wonder.
It's when the building, when that south building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was built and, uh, the roof, the concrete roof of that building provided the lateral support to that wall.
Yeah, right, correct, yeah.
That's why when they demolished it, they put the braces as to kind of replace the, um,
Part of the roof.
Strength of that, um, lateral roof.
That's a good idea. I already be.
Yeah. Instead of waiting two years or whatever your projection is, you know it's not gonna, it's going to fail. Why wait? Why can't you take it down now?
For two reasons.
Checking it and waiting, because with the traffic and the trucks, the train, and then if they do any digging or anything over there, it's all gonna make it that much more unstructurally safe. Why can't it just be taken down now?
Well, because if, there we go. If we were to take this wall down now, then the area behind it will collapse.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's true.
And there is, uh, um, power pole in the general area, rather.
You take that down, you're gonna have to put something back up there. So why can't you instead of later, do it sooner, as my, instead of two years down the road? It's like in spring, when the grass out, tear it down and, and replace.
Well, as you know, at this point, there is no brownfield plan for the redevelopment. As part of, uh, plans for the whole redevelopment in a brownfield plan, the reconstruction of that wall will be included. At this point, it would not qualify, uh, under the existing grant loan from Eagle. And because there is no, uh, brownfield plan in place yet, it would not, uh, be, uh, tiff reimbursable because the one-year look back.
If it happened to start failing, would your, be an option, have sheet piling behind it to hold, hold it up a little better?
That would be an option if it, to fail. Again, I'm going with the engineer's, structural engineer's opinion that it will not, but if it does, well, first of all, we're going to see.
Right, you're gonna want.
The, some indications of failure first, and we'll address them through, uh, excavating and draining behind it.
You could have plenty of options for helping back there, which is.
Yes, and it's a matter of timing.
Yeah.
Um, again, Roger earlier asked, uh, if I may call you Roger.
Yes, you may. I mean.
About how long is temporary? Currently, we're looking at, um, in the order of construction uh, within two years.
Hey, Kevin, anything? No, I, I appreciate the due diligence. Uh, again, our, our major concern was the, the safety, uh, of the property owner behind that wall. And it looks like, uh, I, I feel that, uh, the, your engineer report has given me enough confidence to, at least for the time being, to not have any issues.
Yeah, I've seen those picture. I didn't know those buttresses were behind that wall.
Neither did I.
And so that changed the whole thought.
Sure.
Knowing they were there.
Sure.
Those are the reason for support.
No, I'm, I'm glad that you had a structural engineer look at it. I feel really that it's, uh, a little more stable than it looks like with the braces there.
As a matter of fact, the, um, the upper set of braces, does not even currently support much.
Right.
Most of the support is from the lower braces and from the pellsters behind it, those concrete columns.
Couple things, T. Uh, could we, on the Commission, get, um, copies of what you, uh, put on the screen for us?
I expect to have the, um, final report from the engineer in the next couple of days.
Okay.
I can provide it to the planner.
Okay.
To you.
And just on, if it, if it did fail, would it harm U S thirty-one?
No. No. No, because by the time we get the wall close to thirty-one, there is a slope already behind it. And the corner of the garage, I believe, it's thirty-five feet, so even with failure, as I show you in that cross-section, the worst failure would be forty-five degrees that will take us back fourteen feet south. But again, because of the clay soils, now if it was just loose sand, then it would be a forty-five degree failure. With the clay, even if it was total collapse, it would be much steeper angle. We're going to be doing some supplemental environmental assessments on that property as well as the other properties, the other parcels within the overall gateway property as part of the Eagle grant loan. And I have already planned to have a boring behind the wall to confirm the quality of the soils, the clay soils. Yep.
All right. I'd like to see your copy of that boring when you get it.
Sure.
Were you here tonight or wrote anything in?
No, not that I'm aware of. Nope.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your
I just, I just wondered if the people who will be affected that live behind that wall, if they were here tonight, or if they had sent in any kind of correspondence.
Nope, they didn't send any correspondence. T had taken it upon himself once that article.
You got somebody with their hand raised.
I don't believe we're accepting questions at this time. That would be up to the chair.
There's no questions.
Okay.
We'll be glad to provide the report to the engineer, to the planner.
Sure.
Then it will be public information.
Right.
Yeah, but T had taken it upon himself to see if the commission was open to and wanting him to come in and explain the report, and I figured you guys would be very happy to hear that after our previous discussion. So, it was not spurred by the property owner above, but they might, you know, be happy to hear that as well, that they know it's a nice sound wall, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We, oh, I mean, we do, I'm sure we all appreciate your forwardness, at least answers a few questions.
We had questions on that before, that's why we bring it up.
Sure.
Thank you very much, T.
We thank you, T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project when it happens.
If it happens.
Two years, two years.
Mark, Katie, Mark Miller will be in our March meeting.
March, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And moving along to public hearing, zoning amendment duplex as permitted use in R two. So, it is seven thirty-nine will open the public hearing.
I think that clock is a little bit fast. I have seven thirty-two on my computer.
Okay, seven thirty-two.
You want to go with that?
Sorry about that.
Sounds good. No, you're all good.
I've got four thirty.
You used to look into that.
Watch that.
Must've been the water.
Chair, would you like me to give a brief explanation on this public hearing, the purpose of this public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, yes, today we are having a public hearing for proposing duplexes as a permitted use in the R two district. Currently, duplexes are allowable as a special land use, and none of the regulation associated with permitting a duplex is proposed to be changed. So, the minimum lot sizes, the setbacks, the square footage requirements are all, you know, if this amendment were to go through, those would remain the same. The only aspect that's being proposed to change is the permitting process. So, we have special land uses in the zoning ordinance, and we have permitted uses. Under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, a special land use requires a fifteen-day public hearing notice, a mailing within three hundred feet of the property in question if there is a particular property in question, and the planning commission gives the final approval for any special land uses. A lot of times, we'll see special land uses in the zoning ordinance when there's discretionary standards associated with that use, because as the zoning administrator, we do not typically use discretion, that's more so left to our boards and commissions. I will say that the duplexes do not have any discretionary standards under the current zoning ordinance, so if it were to be, if this amendment were to go through and duplexes were to be allowed as a permitted use, it would just be an administrative approval under the same regulations that we currently have without that property having to go to the planning commission for approval. This amendment is not in regards to any particular property. The discussion actually spurred from our housing coordinator, Tracy Davis, that we have here tonight. The planning department has, and our economic development department has been meeting with Tracy regularly, and one of her, you know, items that she's been working off of is a housing action plan adopted by the city of Manistee in two thousand nineteen. One of the goals of that plan is to eliminate or lessen barriers to housing, and more specifically, making duplexes a permitted use, because the special use permitting process can be seen as a hurdle to developers, and even when you have someone who, you know, may just want to convert their existing house and put a unit upstairs, you know, the process and the permitting fees could be considered burdensome to someone who's trying to, you know, incorporate this type of housing on their property. So, it's really just trying to kind of streamline and make the process for this type of housing more accessible in a way by making the permitting process a little bit easier to get through. I did speak with nine and ten news earlier today, and they did a brief thing on it at the five o'clock news, and the comment that I had made to them was that it kind of is fast-tracking the process, is kind of a good way to think about it, because we're not changing any of the current regulation, just the permitting process if this were to be adopted. So, that's kind of my spiel. I hope that makes sense to everyone, and I guess we can open it up for public comment if the chair is ready for that. I do want to first open it up to Heather. We have her in the lobby for any of those that could not make it up the stairs. So, Heather, if, and one last thing also, I would like to say that we are accepting public comment as it relates to this amendment directly. There is an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda-related items. So, Heather, if you have anyone down there who would like to speak, I think we allow for three minutes, and this is their time.
Katie, I do not have anyone present at this time.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Then I guess, Chair, should we open it up for the room if we have?
For public comment? There's anyone in the audience that have something to say? Name, address, please?
Yep.
You have three minutes.
I might use my husband's three too, but we'll, we'll see. My name is Ruth Pratt. I live at four sixty-three Fourth Street here in Manistee, and I am opposed to this ordinance for the simple fact that my husband and I have lived there twenty-eight years. We plan on keeping our house in our family for generations. I do not think it's right or appropriate that some of these, maybe these bigger old houses in the neighborhood in which we're in, become a duplex, because I can see what somebody would do. A lot of people are doing vacation rentals. I've had some of that in my neighborhood, and, you know, when you plan on living there long-term, you keep your house up, you pay your taxes, and they sure don't come down. I, I think that you're missing the boat to fast-track this. We fast-track down there on River Street where we're coming in now, and look what we got. You know, when you fast-track and don't stop and think, you know, the development down there on River Street where the houses were going to be built, and they were all going to be like this, and then the people didn't have any money, that's fast-tracking. In my opinion, we need to slow things down here and make sure that when somebody goes through with the development, they've got the money. There's over on, over there where the, what is that street? But it was just mentioned at, what street is that, sir? Where, where the guy didn't have the funds to do the
Seven.
Over on Seven, where they granted this and granted that, and he never had the money. I mean, that's, that's fast-tracking. We need to slow things down. We need to think about the people that have lived here for years. I don't think our housing issue has anything to do with not having duplexes. I really think our housing issue has a lot to do with a lot of vacation rentals that are not being reported, and people are using them. You can get a place all winter long. It's as soon as spring comes, then people who are running are out. My husband and I had a two-unit duplex over on Lynn Court that we sold about, about three years ago. Duplexes, when they sell, sell for less money. They're not as desirable. We heard many times through the realtor, if this was a one, single-family home, you'd probably get forty thousand dollars more. It is what it is, but I'm just saying, I think you need to think about the people who are living here long-term. I don't want my neighbors to have duplexes.
Thirty seconds.
There's not parking. Is that with my husband's three minutes, too? I've just got to give you a hard time, Mark. So, I just would like you to, to stop fast-tracking things all over town. Slow things down. Think about the long-term effects this could have. That's my opinion. Thank you.
This is My name is Dan Lasky, and I live at five thirty-seven Fourth, but I'm not here for me. I am, Bob Matice asked me to, he delivered this letter to me at five thirty and asked me to come and read it to you.
I figured.
To the Manistee City Planning Commission. I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting as I'm recovering from COVID nineteen. Myself, Liz Lasky, and Roger Yoder served as former members of this commission. They are, I believe they're all present. Our commission served during a very active period of Manistee. Our accomplishments were significant. We wrote a master plan, which is still basically used with modifications. Zoning ordinance, ordinances were written for the city. We hired a city planner, architect, and an expert on municipal zoning. The huge development south of the North Side Marina and condo development was a product of dozens of lengthy meetings, a real success. Also, the Dunes Drive subdivision was a later product of this North Side project. It should be noted that these achievements did not involve salaried city employees. We produced our own agenda, kept our own minutes, meetings, and et cetera. The only reporting of progress was an occasional discussion with Ben Bifos, the city attorney, city manager, excuse me. The city did not have a planning officer, a building inspector, or an assessor. It was truly a citizen's body. That is some of my background as a city planner, moving Manistee in a positive direction. As a planner, I tried very hard to envision a better Manistee. Today's meeting involves R two duplex zoning without the need for special use permit. Shortcutting the present process of special use permit is not in the best interest of city residents. The city loses control of development and basically the whole city. Anyone with a vacant lot can produce a duplex without the present scrutiny of the city. Any duplex or series of duplexes can be constructed without oversight. Sincerely, Robert Matice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought he was coming up here.
Hi, I'm Tracy Davis, and I'm with Housing North. My address is two fifty-one Seventh Street. So, I wanted to just talk a little bit further about some of the things that Katie had mentioned. I work with a housing action team, which is comprised of community leaders, government entities are represented on that action team, people that are interested, stakeholders in housing in Manistee County, as well as a lot of agencies that work with individuals with housing needs. So, she had mentioned that this ordinance is in relation to a housing plan that had been approved in two thousand nineteen by the city. So, it is on a checklist called a housing ready checklist that has been developed to help remove barriers for workforce housing. And when I say workforce housing, I don't mean subsidized housing, I don't mean low-income housing. It is for that middle-of-the-road workforce housing. And this removes the barriers, and it's a standard practice across the state. It's a standard best practice to have this be something that is, duplexes are allowed. It's, it's nothing more than that. They still have to go through the same processes, they still have to go through the same other hoops that a development would need, but it just makes the process, removes some of the barriers for people to do that. And I just wanted to thank you for your consideration and ask if you have any questions.
There's, there's no deliberation during the comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready. Okay. My name is Seth Pratt. My address is three fifty-five Second Street. I'm the fifth district council member for Manistee. I just wanted to reach out. I've had many area residents contact me in regards to this meeting. I did encourage them to contact you guys. I provided them with your names. However, email addresses were not available on the city website for this commission, so I did refer them to the planning department. I'm not sure if you guys received any emails from individuals, but many people commented by the fact that the notice was right before the holiday. I believe it was published on December twenty-first in the paper, and that it was being held January fifth, which leaves little time for people, especially during the holiday season, to be aware of that. So, I do feel like this is very much fast-tracked. Many people are out of town, but I can tell you that as a council member, I received at least six emails from citizens that were opposed to this. I have a grave concern with it being a blanket statement. I can tell you that I have come before this commission before in regards to properties where people have wanted to make them into duplexes or rental properties. And I feel like as a citizen and a taxpayer and a property owner, that special use permit and the policy implements has worked. So, I question whether that policy isn't working, and I question why it isn't working if it should be tweaked. If we change this and then restrictions change down the road, you've created a blanket statement that doesn't change the process, and I worry about that long-term. And I understand the Housing North individual just got up and spoke, and I understand housing is a huge area of concern across the state, but when we say blanket statements, like this is a statewide practice, I have to disagree with that a little bit. I work in the education system, and the state gives guidance to schools, but as districts, you choose the best practices for your individual district, and I have to wonder if everybody else is, so to speak, jumping off the bridge. Does Manistee decide we're going to jump off the bridge, too? What's working for our community? And I think we need to put that at the forefront and keep in mind, our community may be different than other areas across the state. Working in the school, I can tell you that I have many conversations with people about housing. Housing conversations and the shortage of housing, which is a nationwide issue, it is not a Manistee-isolated incident, but I do not hear any individuals telling me that they cannot find apartments. They are talking about single-family homes, and I don't think necessarily that the workforce, which I would consider myself part of that workforce when we're talking middle-of-the-road. Personally, if I was looking for a home, I have a home, but if I was looking for a home, I wouldn't be looking for a duplex. I would be looking for a single-family home. So, I, I don't know that this process change is going to help us at all with our housing issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Beach. Mark, we're not going to hammer each other tonight on the basketball court. I wish we'd be doing that instead.
Well, that'd be nice.
This is a personal issue because this is going to affect us. We've lived here a long time and it's going to affect our neighborhood. And I've got some personal experience I'd like to share with you. I was a landlord for, oh, 40 years in that little building that's at First and Poplar there. And I had three residence apartments there that were all low-income. One three-bedroom, one two, and one. And then when it came time to sell, I had two buyers from out of town, one from Grand Rapids, and they were going to take those residences out of circulation. That's what they were going to do. Put them into vacation rentals. Of course, that wouldn't have helped our affordable housing at all. But the first one fell through because my Realtor thought that maybe we had to have parking according to a new development, and she didn't understand grandfathering, so she contacted the, you know, the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator never got back to her and I lost the deal. And so I lost a lot of money on that one and I ended up with another guy who wanted to buy it, same deal. This guy wasn't from Grand Rapids, he was from Detroit. Well, gross point. And same thing, he was going to turn it into a VRBO. I didn't like the idea, but well, what are you going to do? I had to get out. I was tired. Because I rented to people and it wasn't affordable housing. Because I worked on the Kirk Building this fall with a young attorney in town here painting the side of that building, and this guy just moved to town, young attorney, couldn't afford anything. Anything he could afford, he couldn't get into because it was all income appraised. And his income wasn't low enough. That's government housing, folks. Who's it helping? All right? So, and then the people that I rented to, oh, here's another story, too. So back in the 90s, Vanessa Boss said, you know, we got this grant, government grant for remodeling apartments, and I need a lot of work on that building, but I didn't have the money. I thought, well, this is embarrassing. I should be a root doctor and people are going to think I'm a jerk if I take this money. But I said, well, I'd better do it anyway.
Mr. Beach, you exceeded the three minutes.
Yeah. Well, I took the money, I remodeled the apartment, and I raised my rent to match the rest of the market. The people that were supposed to be able to afford it didn't have the money. They couldn't pay, and they couldn't get help from the state. So all I'm saying is, you're talking about a permanent solution, and does it really going to help the people that you're trying to help?
Thank you.
But we know that it might hurt the rest of us, and we've got a system that works right now. It's not hurting anybody. Thanks for your time, Mark.
My name's Liz Lasky. I live at 537 Fourth Street. And a lot of the things I've said, I'm going to say may have been said, but one thing is, I don't know if everybody has looked at the zoning map, but the yellow, which is predominantly 85% of R2, Manistee is predominantly R2.
Ma'am, could you address the commission?
Yes, R2. And if you looked at, we did, I looked at Luddington, I looked at the surrounding communities. Many of those communities have R2 for, R1, R2, R3. It's not just all blanketed, R2 duplexes is in R2. So do your due diligence, all of us, and look up the maps of our town and other towns. I also question the timing of this. Since it'll affect 85% of our city, do we all know how much of our city is actually zoned R2? The notice was in the December 21st paper, as was stated, four days before Christmas. This meeting is five days after many of the retired snowbirds have already left for the winter. And if I understand it, what Katie was saying, she did a good job, there's a special procedure for that land use. But one of the key steps in that procedure to get that special land use for duplexes is the neighbors' involvement. A letter is sent to the surrounding neighbors, and a hearing is held where the neighbors can give their blessing, or they can express and contest the change. The neighbors are involved with the zoning change. So the change that could affect most of Manistee was addressed with an ad in the marketplace section with this little 10-inch font in the Manistee paper. Nobody received a letter. Many of the people are gone and not even getting the newspaper. This decision should not be rushed. It does not have to be made tonight. Let's be very transparent on this and let people know what is going on and why. I'm not even quite sure yet what the goal of this change is. If it's to increase housing, what type of housing are we increasing? The short-term rentals? What are we trying to do here? And if it is streamlining the process, let's make sure that that is beneficial to our city. I'm asking you to consider the request of all the residents of Manistee. And most of these people, I look around the room, they are long-term, born here, raised their children here, did their work here. Let's hear, this is called a hearing, let's hear what all these people are saying. If I had gone to Florida and came back and left a single, left my single-family resident, came back and there was two duplexes on either side and I didn't know anything about it, I would be very disappointed in the acts of our city, what had occurred while I was away. So let's make sure everybody knows, don't rush it and be transparent, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rena Cusack-McKinnon. I live on 466 Eighth Street, and I live in a neighborhood that has some Airbnbs. I have some different things. I don't like the sound of streamline, and I don't like the sound of removing barriers for developers to make duplexes easier in our area. We have beautiful, big homes that are often difficult to heat. I could see somebody coming in from a big developer coming in, putting that into a duplex, no problem, doubling their money, renting it out, done. And I'm in a neighborhood that I love. I'm on Eighth Street. I'm in a great neighborhood, I love my neighbors, but I just don't want to see this rush through and making it any easier for any developer to come in and do what I think they're going to do. You look in Grand Rapids in the historic district, though those old, big homes, most of them became duplexes. I lived in one back in the day. And they never go back to a single-family dwelling very often. The money's not there. I just really hope as a planning commission, like I don't know much about what you guys do, I'm just a regular person, I do work in, with youth in the county, and it is a countywide problem for housing, but the planning people, I'm just begging you to really plan. Make sure you think it through before you make any decisions. That would allow someone to come in and ruin what we have. And that's all. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Wendy Camelowski. I'm here with my husband David. David was born and raised here in Manistee, and we chose to buy a home here about 26 years ago. We live at 483 Oxford Court. We've lived there our whole life. We've raised our family here. We've chosen this neighborhood because of the historic value, the schools, the proximity to the beach, and downtown, and we absolutely love it here. And we just really want to express our concern for you guys to really, really think about this. I don't really feel that duplexes are a great fit. Our home is probably within about 300 feet of this area where you're considering this. And please don't fast-track. Please just really think about, like, the master plan. I haven't had an opportunity to look at your master plan, but I don't know how this fits in. We just really want you guys to really think about fast-tracking and please, please give it a lot of consideration. It's not a good fit for us. We are opposed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Mao, 536 Fourth Street. If our previous speaker was a regular person, I'm probably the irregular one. Manistee native through 1989, then away to the Air Force for 26 years, so just coming back. Only trying to add what hasn't been said so far. PhD in economics, Pentagon planner, Afghanistan planner, so we see a lot of good intentions that have bad consequences training in my background. So from an economic standpoint, I hope you will consider that when you go from single house to duplex, whether it's North Side or whether it's East Side, and you're concerned with, I wish our housing would improve, macroeconomic pressures, say. If I create easier, cheaper, newer housing here through duplexes, then all the people who have the same amount of square space lose because here's a newer thing. So if you're looking to promote rejuvenation of some of the Manistee properties, you lose it through the duplex game. At the same time, so you harm the current citizens who want to sell their house and see rejuvenation of their area. And then the people who, we've been hearing from the neighbors, I just remember as at high school, they're being freaked out because I lived on Cot Road, but coming in here and it's like, you have to park on this side or that side when the winter plow comes through. When you go to duplexes, you're probably, are you doubling the traffic? Are you tripling? Is it two people with two cars? Is a garage required to come along with that duplex? Because now you're adding to that alternate side of the street traffic. I mean, there's just simple logistics that come along with this as well. So whatever your data analysis is, I hope you'll take a look at what some of the economic averages are, what the street capacity is, how you harm rejuvenation, and how you can hurt the neighbors as well. So it's a tough road to balance. And there was never a general I briefed in the Pentagon where I said, hey, general, I'm here today to say thank you, right? You always come up for a problem, so thanks for what you do. It's great to have leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. None? Okay.
Actually, I just wanted to say, congratulations, Mark.
Bob, on your...
Name an address.
I'm sorry, David Camelowski, 483 Oxford Court. I know several of you guys on the commission, and I know in my heart that you have the best interest in Manistee. So first of all, thank you for that. I know what you guys are doing is probably hard as hell, and I wouldn't want your position, but anyways, congratulations on your appointments. All I want to say is really just, you know, I know there's a lot going on with duplexes, talk about duplexes and things, and all I want to say is, when you're planning, not telling you how to do your job or whatever, but when you're planning, I know it's easy to think, oh, let's just do this now, or whatever, 2023, but just remember to think, when you're planning, to go, you know, 10 years out, 20 years out, what's this project going to look like 20 years from now? You know, for our kids, or whatever happens. But yeah, that's all. It's just, I know you have the best interest in our hearts, and I appreciate your consideration, but yes, as everybody said, just please, you know, consider everything and don't just, you know, fast-track everything or rush it, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Von Hebrock. I live 345 Fourth Street.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yep, Robert Von Hebrock, on 345 Fourth Street. Okay. Not used to talking amongst everybody at a council like this, so forgive me if I stutter and stuff like that. But I came here three years ago and I bought a piece of crap house. Now, what I loved about Manistee is that the potential in this town was immense, and what I've seen in the last three years is amazing. I love that the downtown is cleaned up. I love that people are fixing up their homes a lot more now than ever before. Now, that being said, I've been putting a ton of money into my house, fixing up the house on the outside, the inside, the landscaping, about to put in a brand-new fence, about to fix up the garage. I keep trying to repair the alleyway, which I'm not responsible for, but I keep trying to make sure that what I can around my neighborhood looks better. And I try to make a better relationship with my neighbors as well. And where I'm getting with this is, when you have renters, just renters, without it being a duplex, you're dealing with just one family or one small group of people renting that house. That's easy to deal with when you don't get along with that neighbor. Now, when you get a duplex, then you have multiple neighbors living closer, and a lot closer means a lot more conflict. A lot more conflict, a lot more noise, a lot more situations that our police really don't need to be called for. Now, I had problems with our neighbor, and it was just one neighbor. Now, I can't imagine if that renter made that into a duplex, because it's so much easier to make it into a duplex to make more money, that I'd have to deal with two conflicts. Now, I say two conflicts because I already have one, so I'm a little bit on edge that I'm going to have more. So I'm a little bit worried about this. Let's not make it easier. Let's just keep it where we can watch the progress. We can see that the people that are going in there are actually benefiting our community, not taking away from it, not bringing it down. When I'm investing all this money, my money, into our town, I call it our town now because I want to be part of it. I don't want to be, I'm almost done, sorry. I don't want to be pushed out because that's what's going to happen. I have to sell my house if I feel like I'm overwhelmed with more issues, right? I just, I love this town. I hope that they, you guys, take into account all the extra people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? None? Okay.
Chair, I'll just check with Heather one more time to make sure nobody showed up downstairs in the lobby. Heather, do we have anyone down there?
No, there's nobody here.
Thank you.
She's been down there all night? Waiting by herself?
Well, we didn't have an elevator for ADA accessibility, so we had to have an option for people to attend on the first floor.
No, nobody held a meeting downstairs.
I said that.
So we will close the public comment and move on to mission discussion. So, what say you?
Chair, we do have public comment on agenda-related items prior to new business. I didn't know. Are you going to discuss during the hearing?
And then we'll move to public comment.
Okay, sounds good.
By the way, I understand the ordinance now. The duplexes are permitted with a special use permit.
Correct.
So there's also minimum requirements of those parcels to be allowed to have a duplex. Am I correct on that?
Correct. A parcel must be 10,000 square feet in order to have a duplex.
Okay, so basically, all we're taking out is a timeline of them having to get the thing, because the ordinance does allow it if they have the correct criteria to match for a duplex. The only thing we're taking out is them having to come before the planning commission to approve it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Just wanted to make sure I got that straight in my head. Nick?
Well, I'll be honest, this just brings up something that we've discussed before, and that's vacation rentals. We have to solve that problem first, in my estimation, because if we don't have a handle on vacation rentals, then I agree with many of the people that potentially we could have a lot more vacation rentals and still be in the same environment where single-family homes are not available for people who want to move, live, and work here. So we've tried on a couple of occasions and...
I'll just run down the list.
To build on what you were saying, we spent many months coming up with a short-term rental idea.
I have it.
I know you have it. And we sent it to City Council, and they pretty much shot us down on it. So, it's not like the Planning Commission here has not taken short-term rentals into consideration. We have. We've also hit a brick wall. So, I share your frustration, and I share a lot of your ideas. And I live in the same neighborhood as a lot of you do. So, I'm done.
Arlene?
As old as I am, I've been on this a long time. And several times in the past, duplex has come up, and it's been turned down. And to me, a duplex is no different than having a two-unit apartment. They wouldn't allow a two-unit apartment in these areas. And to me, that isn't much difference to have a duplex. But that's just my opinion.
Roger?
Well, I'll tell you. Since it's been brought up, and I suppose we haven't looked at it to the depth that the audience might ask us to, but Mick brought up some good ideas as far as, are we eliminating a process by creating duplexes for the people that want a single-family home? So, maybe we do have to just relook at the situation and jot a few things down that we might have missed on our further discussion. The way I feel at this point, I would look at that to be considered, to get a little more thinking on it.
I would ask that you would hold your applause.
Yes, please.
A lot of good points that the audience has brought up, and the Commissioners. I do agree with Mick. I'm not in favor of vacation rentals, by any means. I surely don't want to live by any. And if we have a process now, which we do, I would think, I would like to see us keep it. If somebody wants to put in a duplex, there are criteria to use and to go for. You see it both ways, but I would, I see myself staying the course, using the special use for a duplex. So, it's a tricky one. So, just my thought. Any other comments, concerns from the Commission?
I think that relatively with the pretty much Commission thinks that's just what you said. Look at it a little more consideration. Is that what you're looking at, or just leave it as is?
I, in my heart, Roger, I'm saying leaving it as...
Okay.
The thing is, it's already in there.
Yes.
To be allowed.
Right.
But they've got to go through some additional hoops. All this was trying to do is get rid of those hoops, but I don't think we should get rid of those hoops. The duplexes are still going to come if the people have the right thing set up, the right neighborhood to agree to it, the people around that parcel agree to it, that's through the hearing process, through the special use permit, then it's going to be a duplex there. But it's not to just say, "We don't need hearing, and we don't need, we just need to keep it as a special use." Because there are places that duplex would be applicable. I think he hit the nail on, well, with me anyway, hit the nail on the head. So...
Well, I don't want to eliminate the option of the public input as far as duplexes coming to my neighborhood.
No, we keep that. We have the process in place now.
That's what I mean.
We just don't want to eliminate that.
Okay. So, what are we going to eliminate? That to streamline it, to streamline?
We're not, well, we'll get to that point here in a minute, or a couple of minutes anyway. So, but we're good with discussion on this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm not looking at that clock. It's 8:13. We will close the public hearing portion of this. Move along to public comments on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the Chair. There will also not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the Chair can terminate the portion of the meeting. A limit of three minutes to address the Planning Commission. So, that said, is there anyone in the audience that has anything?
Agenda-related.
Agenda-related items, yes. Thank you, Roger.
You got to clarify.
Take care of me.
I'm trying, though.
Okay, thank you.
I got you, sir.
Need some help some days. So, is there anyone out there?
Does that include the topic that you just...
Agenda-related items only.
Whatever's on the agenda, yeah. Does everybody have an agenda? Are they out there? Are they out there in the hallway?
We didn't print 40.
Didn't print, oh.
No, we printed like 10, maybe.
We have somebody at the podium.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Forgive me if addressing the topic that you just discussed is not permitted on the agenda. Okay. My name is Vincent Qualia. I live at 433 Elm. It's not a comment, but just based on what I've heard now, you all speak of a suggestion that if you're permitted to adopt a resolution that gives preference to single-family dwellings as opposed to duplexes. If you have a contractor who wishes to build single-family homes, and another one who wishes to build duplexes or other types of structures, if you're permitted to adopt some kind of resolution to give preference to single-family homes over duplexes, it may be an alternative to, even though duplexes are permitted, preference can be shown for single-family dwellings. That's it. Thank you.
Ruth Pratt again, 463 Fourth Street.
And I just wanted to bring up a couple of little things that I didn't have time for before. But one was, our direct neighbor, Chuck and Rosie Dillon, and when they bought their house, they wanted to put apartment above their garage. And we were all sent letters in the neighborhood, and it was voted no. And, you know, there's been no hard feelings. Life has went on. It's been great. Now, maybe about two years ago, one block over, a gal wanted to open a bed and breakfast. She, you know, same thing. The letter went out. People were, came and talked, and it went through. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the system we have is working. It's working for everybody. It's working for the people who've lived here a long time. Do we need to fast-track this? I mean, sometimes you've got to think about the long-term effects on things. You know, we've been here 30 years, and one thing I always think of is, why is the city garage where the city garage is of all the places? If those people long ago would have thought, what would have happened 30 years down the road? You know, I mean, we do need to think about, what is the long-term effect of what we're doing here? And I just want to thank you for at least, at least not being paper pushers and taking some time to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now is your chance.
Speaker forever, hold your peace.
Voice?
And I will just double-check with Heather. I know we have no one down there. Or we didn't have anyone down there. But Heather, do you have anyone for public comment on agenda-related items?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Well, she moved. All right. Well, we will move on from the public comment on agenda-related items and switch into new business. Zoning amendment, duplex as permitted, use R2. Further discussion? Motion to accept or reject?
I make a motion that we postpone any action on this item until we have a little bit more information and have a chance to have a little bit more thought. Plus, I do think that it's important that we bring back to City Council a proposal for management of vacation rentals. And then, at that point, I think we can then readdress the possibility of duplexes, and possibly not over the entire R2 district. That may be another option that we look at, is not having it through the entire R2 district, but look at areas where duplexes may serve the population in our community better than others, instead of just looking at the whole map. And those would be my suggestions.
Okay. Mick put a motion on, really, to table...
Table this until we have a chance to readdress the scope of duplexes as well as vacation rentals.
Great, great.
Is there a second? Second?
Go ahead.
Second? Roger, third?
We're at discussion.
So, there's a motion to table. Further information, excuse me? Any further discussion?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
A part of that, I would like to see if Katie could, a list of what we are eliminating by doing this fast-tracking, so everyone says, so I know what we're not, you know, so everybody still gets to say it. I'd like to add that to the motion, if I could. Katie?
Would you please read the motion on, so I know, so I understand? Mick motion, Bob seconded, to table this until it can be addressed on the scope of duplexes and vacation rentals, and to take some of the vacation rentals back to City Council for management of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct, Mick?
Is that correct?
Close, close. And then the other thing, also examining the scope of R2 as it relates to allowing for development of duplexes.
Is there places in R2 that should not take place at all? But there is some places in R2 that...
That may benefit.
Do we amend that? Do we continue on the motion?
No, it doesn't have to be amended, because I looked up, and it was in my sentence.
Okay, all right.
Just did not catch it.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, yes, on the vote.
Your yes on the vote?
Yes, on the vote.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning amendment, accessory buildings on corner lots.
Yes, so I put together a memo for you all. This was, this conversation was posed to me by the city manager a couple months ago. If the Planning Commission wanted to look at accessory buildings on corner lots, it can become a little bit more difficult for those on a corner lot, because you're dealing with two front setbacks and two side setbacks, as opposed to a front, two sides, and a rear. And then, we also have the provision that accessory buildings cannot be located in a front yard. So, when you're on a corner lot, you have, you know, multiple front yards, and again, can be limiting for those with that type of property. I did investigate a couple other zoning ordinances, and I actually found that most communities really do not allow for accessory buildings to be in the front yard, or they simply just don't indicate what yard they are supposed to be in. So, it's kind of a one or the other type of thing. Our ordinance indicates no accessory building. No detached accessory building shall be located in the front yard, only inside and rear yards. And like I said, that's pretty common across the board. It's either that they control what yards they're in, or they mention nothing about what yard a building should be in. This is really an aesthetic thing. I mean, we have setbacks in place for safety, but this would not, we wouldn't really want to let accessory buildings, you know, go outside of the required front setbacks, because those are there for safety. But having accessory buildings in your side or rear yard really is an aesthetic thing. So, I did put together some sample language that could be incorporated in the zoning ordinance if the Commission felt that this was something we wanted to look at. And in Oneakama Township, they do have a lot of undeveloped platted roads. So, this is something I worked with them on last year. They've got a lot of people with even quadruple, or like triple, front yards, and that creates, you know, a scenario where you've got almost nowhere to put a detached accessory building. So, I pulled this language from their ordinance. And then, let me see, what else I had here? And then, also, just another simple solution, how I indicated previously, that a lot of communities will either say that they're allowed to be in the front yard or not, doing something like a subsection to the current language on a corner lot, or a lot with more than one road front, which an accessory building may be located in the front yard, but all required setbacks shall be met. And again, I know I'm repeating this a lot, but it really comes down to aesthetics. It's not to say that an accessory building in the front yard is always going to be, you know, not aesthetically pleasing, but generally, when you drive through the neighborhoods, you see building setbacks. So, staff does not have a recommendation on which way to go with this. This is, you know, something entirely up to the Commission, and based off of, you know, this sample language we put together, we can modify that if you guys see fit. But at this time, staff is really just looking for a motion on whether you guys would like to proceed with a public hearing at your next meeting or an upcoming meeting to address this, or if you feel the ordinance is fine as is. Any questions?
Yes. Any questions for Katie?
Okay. So, on a corner lot, don't you have, isn't the front of your lot considered where your street address is?
No.
We don't have that defined.
No.
We need to define that.
And that's, and that's kind of what Oneakama had done with the established front yard, because with having what I call, like, through lots, when you have, sometimes you have streets on parallel, and then, you know, side yards on opposite ends. So, again, that's like front yards all the way around. So, they defined established front yard, meaning a yard extending across the full width of the parcel, and lying between the parcel lines where the driveway and address for the principal building are assigned and nearest part, are assigned in the nearest part of the principal building. So, it's establishing your front, and then the location of accessory buildings, language in their ordinance details that, you know, a building must be facing the established front yard. And they got a little bit more into, they don't want it more than half the distance between the established front yard and the primary dwelling, so you're not getting a garage, you know, set too far up. But that worked out well for the lot sizes and the kind of what they're dealing with in their community. It might work for the city. I would say we probably want to modify it a little bit from what Oneakama did, but that's the idea behind that one.
That makes a little bit more sense. And again, even if we required a fencing of some type to restrict the view from the non-front of your lot, if you have a corner lot, and you were going to have an accessory building, that could be even created as an option, so that you don't have, it looks like, you know, a bunch of buildings in your backyard or in the front of somebody else's yard.
A lot of the things I see is, a lot of these subdivisions in the city are from the early 1900s, where there doesn't designate the front of the lots. In the 1960s, when the subdivision act came into play, we were required on new subdivisions to declare what part of that lot on the plat is the front. So, that clears up a lot of language. What we need is something for these older subdivisions to decide where the front of the lot is designed at. That makes, that would help a lot, because it nails it down. Any new subdivision you see since 1962, you're going to see on it saying...
And they got a little bit more into, they don't want it more than half the distance between the established front yard and the primary dwelling, so you're not getting a garage, you know, set too far up. But that worked out well for the lot sizes and the kind of what they're dealing with in their community. It might work for the city. I would say we probably want to modify it a little bit from what Oneakama did, but that's the idea behind that one.
That makes a little bit more sense.
Mm-hmm.
And again, even if we required a fencing of some type to, to restrict the view from the non-front of your lot, if you have a corner lot and you were gonna have an accessory building, that could be even created as an option so that you don't have, looks like, you know, a bunch of buildings in your backyard or in the front of somebody else's yard.
A lot of the things I see is that a lot of these subdivisions in the city are from the early 1900s where there doesn't designate the front of the lots. In the 1960s, when the subdivision act came into play, we were required on new subdivisions to declare what part of that lot on the plat is the front. So, that clears up a lot of language. What we need is something for these older subdivisions to decide where the front of the lot is designed at. That makes, that would help a lot because it nails it down. Any new subdivision you see since 1962, you're gonna see on it saying front. So, that nails a lot of things down. So, on these older ones, we're at a loss for where's the front of the lot? That is, that's something I feel we need to just establish what the front of the lot is.
There you go.
Well, I live on a corner lot, so. I, I would have a concern with building a fence on what technically would be my side yard because that's also on another street. I'm gonna have to look up exactly the definition and sizing of the accessory buildings because I don't remember right offhand.
It's 10 by 10 or 10 by 12. I think it's 100, well, 100 square feet.
100 square feet, okay.
So, 10 by 10.
For, that's for exempting from a land use permit, the 10 by 10. For accessory buildings in the residential districts, you're allowed to have a detached accessory building with a footprint smaller than your principal building. In R1 or in R2, I don't know off the top of my head if it's the same in R1, it might be in all the residential districts. You can only go up to 12-foot sidewalls. Can't be taller than your principal building. So, they, the ordinance does control that to an extent, the sizing of them, but it's typically based off of the primary building outside of the sidewall height requirement.
And forgive me, but once again, what is it, what are we currently allowing, anything or nothing?
Currently, regardless of being on a corner lot or a double frontage lot, an accessory building is not allowed to exist in the front yard unless it's attached. So, a detached accessory building cannot be in the front yard. And that includes even when you're on a corner lot. And, you know, it, it becomes just a little bit more difficult for some people on a corner lot when most of your yard is a front yard. So, you know, it's not something that comes up all the ti, I mean, it comes up every once in a while. We have corner lots, you know, people are, people try to build buildings on them. It's not something that crosses my desk every day. But, you know, I think it's an issue that people have and will continue to have, but it comes down to kind of the aesthetics and how you want to set that up. Because I'm not sure I would set it previously, but you don't necessarily want what appears to be the back of a building next to what someone's, their front, yeah, yeah. So, that's where, and that's where I think a lot of communities just either don't allow for it at all or they, you know, they don't control, like I know Arcadia Township, their zoning ordinance actually does not dictate what yard an accessory building can be in. You just have to meet the setbacks. You know, generally people want their own property be, to be aesthetically pleasing as well. So, it just comes down to how much this commission really wants to modify that, if any, and control that location.
Marlene?
I'm fine with the way it's been in the past. See, a need to, to change it to, to put some kind of a little bigger foot thing on the side lot.
Roger?
I'd just say we're at the step now where we bring in a public hearing if we so desire. I believe the more public input we get, the better off decision we can make. So, I would look at it that way if, you know.
I know in the past, I remember two, since you and I served on, on the committee, that we, we had an accessory building coming before us.
Yeah, right.
And Will Marlene was there too. And we did, we did reject it. I can remember at least two, you know, one on the eighth.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I, I'm in favor of really just keeping it as it is. I think it's, it's cleaner that way.
And I guess one thing too, if that's the way the commission is leaning, I failed to mention that, you know, we always have our zoning board of appeals process as well. So, for those kind of nuances, if you guys feel that the zoning ordinance is okay as is, there's always the option for someone to go before the zoning board of appeals if they truly do not have any other, you know, option, or they have a unreasonably burdensome practical difficulty that grants and warrants a variance, that could always be an option for those that have more limited, limited space and options on their part.
Give some work to the ZBA too, so.
Yeah.
No, we don't want to keep sending people there if we, you know, if we have a problem here, is what I.
We never have problems.
I mean, I don't have a problem. You got a problem?
No.
Not with you.
I got a problem. Go ahead, Mar, cool.
So, I, is there a motion to accept or deny accessory buildings on corner lots?
Actually, from what I understood is all we're trying to figure out, are we wanting to, her to, Katie, to proceed on figuring out an amendment? That's the way I understand.
You have to have.
A motion on if you guys would like to hold a public hearing at the next meeting for this.
Okay.
So, kind of the pre-decision decision.
The pre-decision decision.
Yes.
Well, I, I think that a, a public hearing without really knowing exactly what we're want to present is probably not gonna do much either.
Or you could potentially hold a work session if this is something you guys wanted to dive into more, or just let it go tonight. It's ultimately up to you.
I'd rather have a work session than discuss them.
No, I, I hate to just arbitrarily cut out every property owner that has a corner lot from having the opportunity to build an accessory. We just need to do if we do it, we keep, we think about everything that's needed, so.
Well, I live on a corner lot, so I mean, yeah, I don't want to be deprived of my property.
Well, you are.
I am.
So, I, I think that the work session would be my suggestion.
A motion, a motion we have a work session on this.
So, the motion is to have a work session here sometime, maybe next month?
Sure.
If, that would be another meeting. Remember that.
You get paid for it.
You never have enough. That's why I have room now.
So, motions on, on the table to have a work session next month?
Or the month after.
Or the month after, whatever, however your schedule is, I mean, things are.
Yeah, if you guys wanna send a couple dates you have in mind, we can make sure we.
We have to see the schedule for the city hall, so it's vacant.
Yeah.
To have.
Well, if we throw those dates out, then we can.
Right, right. Whenever that's available. Couple years, couple months.
It also depends on when Katie would have time.
Yeah, what do you want, give her some time?
We're not, we're not gonna rush you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, you have.
Well, and I would.
Nope, nope.
And I would encourage you guys to take some time and maybe explore some other zoning ordinances and look at, you know, what I, other ideas might be out there. And then we can all come together at the work session and see if this is something, you know, that we want to modify.
Sixteenth?
During our training exercise.
Yeah.
March 16th? Roger, March 16th, that'll give us enough time to gather information, so.
Thursday.
Thursday.
March 16th.
So, who had the motion? Bob? Okay, you want a motion with the March 16th?
16th of March.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Well, I need a second, I need a, so second by Marlene?
Marlene, but I'd say on the 16th at seven o'clock here?
Yes.
Is that what the plan is?
If, if available.
If available.
If available, okay. Any other discussion? None, please take rule.
No, yeah.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Old business?
Old business.
None, okay. Here we are again, so public comments and communication. Anybody in the audience has any comment, please approach the podium.
And Chair, if I may, can I open it up to Heather real quick so we can get her out of here if she doesn't have anyone down there? Heather, do you have anyone who would like to provide a final comment?
I do not.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Heather.
Now you can, Mr. Beach.
Okay. I'm on the zoning board of appeals. I've only been on it for a year and we are not overburdened.
We want to.
What's that?
We want to.
So, we've had two cases though, all time, so, I mean, this last thing that you were talking about, we could handle that real easily.
Okay, I'll give you something to do. Earn your money. Anybody else?
Thank you for your time.
Once, twice, okay? Staff reports?
I don't really have much for you guys. I did want to mention that we got everyone signed up for the training, so you should have received your invoice email and then you can.
Nope.
No?
Nope, haven't received a thing out of it.
Okay, well, I'll email.
I didn't receive nothing.
Okay, well, I'll get with MSU and make sure you guys are all receiving your videos, but that was all signed up for, everyone's good to go there. Marlene, I have yours on my email, so you can come in and do them at our office or I can get you hooked up on a computer. So, and that is really all I had. I don't have much more for staff reports.
Okay, Nancy?
No, I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Move on to member discussion, we'll start with the captain. Anything?
Uh, no, we got a lot of stuff coming forward. I, I see the more housing units, but other than that, they're okay, I guess.
All right, thank you. Marlene? None. Pam? Nick?
I said enough.
You never do. Bob?
You want to just check on why I haven't gotten that stuff yet?
Yes.
Other than that, I'm glad, glad to see the progress that's going down at the Hampton Inn. It was nice to see that they've got, survived all the windstorms and got some of the final part of the outside of the northern part of the building up, the final, final covert coverings on it. They're getting ready to start moving down the sides.
Point, possibly in March, Katie, is there an opportunity to schedule another tour for the commission?
Yeah, I can, I can contact.
March, April, something like that, as they, they grow closer to completion?
Yeah, I can ta, contact Tom about that. He is actually the, the person who initiated those tours, so I'm sure he'd be happy to do another round for you guys, especially with them being that much closer.
Just us, so I mean.
Okay, just for the planning commission.
Other than that, there's, things are moving along, I think, pretty good in town. We just, we're, we're looking forward to more development eventually coming in.
Thank you. Just to thank you to Heather for staying tonight and arranging Zoom and the duplex meeting, will that be another public hearing or?
You are not statutorily required to hold another public hearing. That doesn't mean that you don't have to. I know that there was some concern expressed from the public about the noticing period for this meeting. And I will say that there was no ill intention behind that. I actually, you know, it's a 15-day requirement and that's, that's what was put out for this meeting. But if you guys did want to hold another public hearing on this and make it available to the public, there's nothing that would stop you from holding another public hearing. You're just not statutorily required. We fulfilled the 15-day noticing requirement with, with this meeting.
Okay.
And holding the public hearing.
So, with that said, what, what is the feeling of the commission?
I don't see any need at this point since we're not moving forward.
Bob? Roger?
Hello.
Do you need a, a, a public hearing?
A public hearing, well, we, nothing wrong with a public hearing, but we're okay right now.
Marlene?
I think it's fine right now since we haven't made any decision.
Okay, all right.
And if I could add, for, for the public as well, knowing that the decision was tabled, you, you know that it'll be picked up at the next meeting. So, even if there isn't a public hearing held, if anyone wanted to come and express their comments, you know that this agenda item will be picked up at the next meeting that occurs. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Um, after the meeting?
If I, if I could, Katie, in this, Tracy, are you from the Housing North? Have you been to one of our meetings to explain your position?
Uh, no, I haven't been to a planning.
Yes, I didn't think so. Could you come to one of your meeting? I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Roger.
Katie, set it up.
Yeah, we actually have to come in every month.
So, we know where you're coming from. Okay, that's it, thank you, Mar.
Okay, good. Back to our favorite storage facility on 12th Street. Rode by the other night and they had no security lighting on it at all. That was at 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, darker than a pair of socks, so.
That dirt's a rodent.
I will address that with the property owner and proceed with whatever's appropriate.
Now, i- if they're on a timer, you know, their timer could be off, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with him and update you guys and make sure that they're in line with what they're permitted and what they're supposed to have over there.
And I know this isn't us, but the building on First Street, Ring, the old Ringo Oil Building, it looks like hell, you know, sorry for my, but it, it looks bad. And I don't, you know, I don't know if we, you know, how to go about with blight, if that is truly considered blight, it's in much disrepair.
Um, yeah, that's something that I would say we could report to Chief Glass. I also know, it just came to mind, that you had asked about a blight report at one of our previous meetings. That's, I don't think that's something that the police department has, you know, like a tangible, here, here you go, here's a write-up. But Chief Glass did express that he'd be happy to come in or one of his officers and give an update on blight if you guys wanted to have them in, so.
All right. You're sometime in the future, you want to do it, we're, we're full next month with Jeff McCula coming in to speak?
Mm-hmm. You could always have Chief Glass just come in and do like a brief.
Okay.
Five minute, if you wanted.
Then if, can you arrange that for, for next month?
For March?
Yep.
Yes.
Or for February.
February.
Oh, yeah, February. I had March written on really, okay.
No, February 1st. That's true.
Okay. With that, that's all I have.
All right.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm looking at the clock, it is 8:45 PM.
8:45.
Motion?
Good.
We got to use our. Has the French doors.
Just like we had. So, there won't be a.
Fish, chicken.
No, correct. We are putting it down and they're.
I, you can check with the passenger because they, I think you have been sending to my old email which was from City Hall and I don't know.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna put that here and I'm gonna check it on hers and mine.
So, you're there?
I was in here, Pam?
North side, I don't know. Well, you're out of the, you're out of here on both.
It's snowing out.
Pass the rest.
No snow to go skiing down here.
You're right, I want to, can you cross or down?
Uh, we do both. I have a chance.
I just danced recently. She's friends of the lady who owns the house by the, all the. She doesn't live there, but she has his name and address.
No.
Okay.
And, yeah, this is her address in Texas, where she lives, or the phone number.
Um, okay, I can get a phone number, because I probably have an address on my system. Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, I'll give this information to Katie, and see if she wants to write up a letter, or have me write up a letter to tell her what was going on. Or we can, you know, send her the minutes, which will show the bullets of what he stated.
Okay.
Okay? Um, you can, you know, so.
Well, if not, you can call.
Right, right, okay. I'm just going to put a note, send her.
You're welcome, thank you.
She, I think I had a lot of choices there. Will there? I have yet to find that one in my box. Oh, yeah. I know how much you get. Send her a copy. What I'm going to do is send her a copy of the minutes, when I get them done, and possibly a letter with it. And I'll get with Katie on that and work with her, because Katie's schedule is really tight, both parts. As, 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 and, but I will, I will work with Katie. Now, when you contact her, just want to know, though, this could take a couple weeks, okay? Don't, it's, it's not something I can get out today or next week, because I have, these minutes take, may take, because I've got two other meetings in front of this one to do minutes and type them up for, and I've got soil erosion permits that I type up for and get out the door, and I've got all those letters that I do, and I've got Katie's letters that I do, and I've got, so.
Do you ever get to eat or sleep?
Um, gee, I'm not sure I sleep much. If I don't, my problem is, is when I eat, it's probably not the best, because I have to snack on something to get, it's got to have something good. But I will get it to her, but, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll put it on my, when I get down there.
I'm just going to look up, uh, City DPW here, and that is the main office line.
Just a draft.
So you can call them.
These minutes cannot be.
And Jeff McCula's email address is also online, if you wanted to email him, but DPW
And it will have a draft written right across it, so, yeah. But it's, for the most part, it'll be something for her to get updated, okay? All right. I don't have a card to give you. I don't.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you. Yeah, so I, I'd like to remain neutral on these types of things, so you can see, I'm proposing it to them, it's for a couple work sessions.
Yeah, my name is Nancy.
You know, like, I, oh, your builder actually called me today, yesterday.
Are we concerned?
Yes, I, I have, my direct, that was that 88 possibility.
No, no, my direct number is 231.
Ready for this, so I haven't called him back, but I was going to get in touch with him and potentially do like a site.
3576, that's direct to my.
Yes, so, yeah, I have a call-in from Caleb yesterday. I just haven't had a chance to get back.
Yeah, you're going to do a walk-in last night.
Oh, probably the morning, yeah, yeah, sometime in the morning. I'm probably only going to have a half-day tomorrow with this meeting tonight, but depending on Caleb's availability as well. Might be next week.
Do they understand the system, also Matt D.?
Yeah, I don't know where that, that comment, that, that's, we're not talking about.
She has a family that we do. She's at the corner of Earl Wright and Jeff's somewhere, and she's like, she's trying to build it to her car.
I don't know if she's been in contact with you, but.
No, she hasn't.
Yeah, she's like, it's so hard.
Yeah, yeah, well.
She's like, I have to stay on the agenda too.
Right, yeah, we'll see what comes of the work session. Work sessions are also open to the public, but they're certainly not like a public comment opportunity, and we record everything, so you can always like walk and watch the work session after if you didn't really want to go, but that's open. Um, yeah, I think they said March, yeah, so they're, they're pushing it out a little bit. But, yeah, maybe something Caleb will have it figured out. Yes, okay, sounds good. I have to be careful about what I accept from people, but if there's a cookie floating around, I don't, I think that'd be okay, yeah. Yeah. All right, you guys have a good one. Yeah, you too. I'm going to lose my mind. Oops, I'm still recording, hold on.